Gernat.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Council Vice President, Mr. Gernat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, endow us with thy Spirit that we may be fair and just to all as we begin our earthly work. Amen.
City Clerk's Certified Publication in the Day Record on October 19th, noted for a pre-council regular city council meeting, October 23rd, 2012. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on our published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance on second reading, ready bonds, item number five, ordinance authorizing and approving the establishment of a master lease purchase program for police cruiser acquisition, authorizing and approving separate lease purchase agreements between the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation and the City of Omaha to provide funding for the lease purchase of police cruisers.
Public hearing on agenda item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments, item number six, ordinance extending the limits of the City of Omaha on certain land in Douglas County incorporating the same into and making the same part of the City of Omaha, location 2240 North Main Street, including the adjacent Blondo Street right away, Elks Hills subdivision, SID 553, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Motion to approve. The public hearing on agenda item number six was held on October 16th, 2012. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Gary. Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance passed seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number seven through eight shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number nine shall be laid over for two weeks. Liquor, item number 10, Journey Bar &amp; Grill, 2236, 2240 North 91st Plaza, Suite 26 and 27, a Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Thomas Green, 1131 Chicago Circle, on behalf of the applicants, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 11, La Grill, 1017 Howard Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mark Mercer, 511 South 11th Street.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Mercer, could you just tell us a little bit more about what's going in here? This is the old French Cafe, which I know was a very popular establishment in Omaha for years and a very popular location, so I'm sure there's interest in what La Grill is going to offer.
Well, we're working on some menus and things, but we're thinking of having some French things but a little other grilled, simple things like maybe quail grilled quail and grilled squab and fishes, simple fishes done simply and as well as some old, maybe some oysters and clams and oyster stew and clam chowder and smoked salmon and smoked trout and sort of, those are some of the ideas we're...
And with some renovations or what's the idea with the building?
Some change, some cleaning, some painting, some changes, not a lot.
Okay. You're making Councilman Jerem hungry, I know by that description. It sounds great. And to be open when?
Well, maybe next in December, maybe we hope.
That's great. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call. Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Snack Attack, 4854 Q Street, package liquor license, new application, old location, is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
David McIntosh, 13701 South 43rd Street, Bellevue, Nebraska. Part one, we're in the Snack Attack, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 13, El Mundo de Mexico, 2415 M Street, request permission to change location of the present Class C liquor license to 2407 M Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
My name is Guadalupe Cardenas. I, now I'm 2415 M Street, I'm going to move into 2407. The same liquor license, it's the same thing, only one I'm moving by a little more, three or four blacks.
Okay.
No, but one and a half black.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat. Is it, just so I understand that we've got it right, you're going from 2415 to 2407 M Street, which is right across the alley from where you're at now?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Is that a larger space than what you have now?
The same size as the one I rented.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Okay.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 14, DoubleTree Guest House, Omaha Central, 7270 Cedar Street, request permission to appoint Douglas Winters manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Douglas Winters, 12826 Emmeline Street.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Winters. You have a significant criminal history that concerns me, although it was over 10 years ago. Can you tell me what your experience as a liquor manager is?
I have over 20 years in the business. I've been working since 2019 in restaurants and bars.
Okay.
And managing from Chicago, Los Angeles, Phoenix.
So you have plenty of experience.
Yes, ma'am.
And have you ever taken any of the certified liquor management courses with the state?
With the state, I've only taken the service so far. So I'm in the process of getting the liquor requirements.
Okay. And is this your first job as a liquor manager in Omaha?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 15, Bangdad Lounge, 2823 South 84th Street, request permission to appoint Donald Larson manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Your name.
Donald S. Larson.
And your address.
My home address with a...
There you go.
2008 South 10th Street, Bellevue, Nebraska.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 16 is Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, 205 North 72nd Street, request permission to appoint Larry Cushing manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Larry Cushing, 15023 Field Crest Drive.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Any samples? Thank you. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order. We're going to remove item number 21 from the consent agenda for ordinances.
The public hearings on agenda items number 17 through 20 and item number 22 were held on October 16th, 2012. Motion to approve. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to nothing. Item number 21 is an ordinance to approve an agreement between the city and empowerment network and the police research and policy group to authorize funding from the Omaha 360 grant to provide funding for violence prevention and intervention programs in Omaha.
The public hearing on agenda item number 21 was held on October 16th. Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Councilman Gray passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's passed, six, zero, one passing. Now, we're going to remove items number 36 and 47 from the consent agenda on the resolutions.
36 and 47, correct.
Go ahead. Yeah.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 23 through 36.
Through 35.
35, excuse me. 37 through 47.
46.
46.
And 48.
And 48 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Item number 36 is resolution supplement agreement number one with HDR Engineering for additional preliminary engineering services for the Douglas Dodge Street S-Curve project is hereby approved.
The public hearing on agenda item number 36 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask a few questions to public, I guess it would be Public Works, right, on this one? This has been studied before, has it not? And why do we need more? I guess this is just for more engineering services. I just want to know a little bit more about this. Is this considered a dangerous area and what is the plan?
Bob Stube, Public Works. The S-curve, which essentially goes from Dodge Street to Douglas Street, is what would be considered as a substandard section of roadway. It carries a lot of traffic. It's got a steep grade, plus it's got the double curves in there. So the intent is, is that what we're doing now is essentially a preliminary study to develop concepts to essentially look at making improvements to that particular section. One of the things is, is that if you're going east-west and also north-south, it's very difficult to be able to make those maneuvers going north and south. And so what we're doing is also looking at Turner Boulevard, how it connects in Park Avenue, and essentially what this amendment to the agreement is, is to look at extending the boundaries a little bit further outside of what the original scope was so that we can look at all of those sections in there for both east-west and north-south movement.
Is it considered a dangerous area of road? Are there accidents there or is it just because, as you said, it's a substandard? Considered substandard?
Yeah, it is a substandard section from the standpoint of the potential speeds that because of the slope and then also because of the fact that there is a double S-curve in there with the quantity of traffic that it is, what we would consider as substandard and therefore make those types of improvements. And again, also to improve the north-south connectivity between the Park Avenue, Midtown to the south, and also Creighton to the north.
So what type of work do you foresee happening there?
Well, that's part of what the study is going to do, is develop a bunch of concepts to look at exactly what it would, would they maintain the existing alignment? Would you look at changing the alignment? How would you improve the north-south connectivity? That's essentially what this preliminary engineering study would do.
And do you recall how much we've already spent on this?
Not off the top of my head, no. Again, we're in the early stages of this project. Essentially, it's in the capital improvement program. It'll be a number of years to be able to go through the process of developing the actual concept, do the design, and this is a project that is using federal funds and therefore there's requirements that we have to comply with when using federal funds.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, and just so my colleagues know, this is a process that's been going on for months. I've been participating in these meetings. It is in the very early stages where they've been soliciting and receiving input from the businesses there, the neighborhoods that are in that area, and mindful that we have connectivity issues, especially eastbound on Dodge trying to access Creighton Allegiant Health Hospital there as a trauma center. You cannot turn left from Dodge at that intersection to go north on Lincoln Boulevard up into 30th Street.
Oh, yes, we do.
As well as the substandard nature of the S-curve to the south. So it's studying any number of ideas. There's all sorts of preliminary suggestions being made, everything from continuing Dodge as a two-way further to the east at that point with inserting turn lanes to some people who have wild ideas of bridges being built and then slight modifications to the S-curve. But at this point, there's a lot of work to be done, a lot more engineering to be done, input to be received, and so this recognizes that there's more engineering to be done. So I appreciate your support.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 47, resolution, the City of Omaha hereby creates the Blackstone Business Improvement Board, which consists of five or more members made up of property owners, residents, business operators, or users of space within the Blackstone Business Improvement Board area with frontage on Farnham Street between 36th and 47th Streets, or 42nd Streets.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, this agenda item is pretty exciting for Midtown because we have an area of the city, an important potential business node for small businesses in an emerging area that has been working on trying to redevelop their community and their district for years. They've overcome troubled liquor establishments that we've collaboratively worked together to get closed down with the assistance of code enforcement and planning. They're now out of there. And they've been looking at ways of trying to spur redevelopment, and they've decided one of the key ways to do that is through extending the successful model for a two-way Farnham Street that exists east of 36th Street to take that west to 42nd Street. To do that, there's dollars that are involved, and the model so far has been a public-private partnership. And so we've had input from Public Works, from planning, from the Chamber of Commerce that's helped facilitate meetings, to the Blackstone Neighborhood, to the Med Center, Keywit Mutual of Omaha, business stakeholders like Brad Iwan, Jay Lund, Rhonda Stuber, Dan Houlihan, Dan Gotze, Dwayne Brown, and Jim Faro. And they've taken that evolution to a series of working group meetings that on Thursdays and decided collectively with input from all the stakeholders and property owners that they want to move to the next step to form a business improvement district. So this is the first step in that process that'll facilitate that creation. The next thing that'll be coming back are the appointment of board members that the mayor will be making that'll be nominated from those stakeholders. And, you know, we look at small businesses as creating jobs and stimulating our economy. And what more opportunity can you point to in Midtown in need of such investment on our part? And this is a small process. Investing is your yes vote to create this. So good things are on the way for the Blackstone Business Improvement District and the people who have invested in that, people who have stayed there through thick and thin, and they now can see that this is coming to fruition where they'll have a mechanism for doing improvements within their business district. So I appreciate your support.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just commend Councilman Jerem for working on this. I know it's something he's been working on for quite some time. And when you think about the Blackstone Business District, it's very similar in nature to areas in my district, Florence and Benson and Dundee, where we're working to create similar renovation projects and partnerships. And in the case of Dundee and in the case of Benson, this council adopted new business improvement boards to do exactly this, which empowers those local businesses to fund and control products they want to do and also attracts additional public investment, additional private investment. I think that will happen here, too. So I will say it's a long ways between now and coming back with the actual ordinance that has all the details in it, but I certainly wish him well and I anticipate supporting it when it comes back. Thanks.
Motion to approve. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Resolution, item number 49, resolution attached amendments to the Omaha Council Plus Fiscal Year 2010, 11 and 12 Consolidated Submissions for Community Planning and Development Programs are hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 50 through 57 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance is on second reading. Item number 58, ordinance approving an interlocal agreement between the city and the Omaha Council Plus Metropolitan Area Planning Agency to provide for the terms and conditions under which the Omaha MAPPA will participate in a project to obtain regional digital map products.
Public hearing on agenda item number 58 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 59, ordinance authorizing a purchase order to Polidine for the purchase of sludge dewandering Palmers.
Public hearing on agenda item number 59 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 60, ordinance clearing says to appropriating property located at 4212 Grant Street for implementing of the Consolidated Submission Action Plan.
Public hearing on agenda item number 60 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 61, ordinance approving an open order for various vendors for the purchase of medical supplies used by the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 61 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? purchase of medical supplies used by the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-two, ordinance to approve, to accept the bid of Hyman Fire Equipment to provide firefighter turnout gear for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-two begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-three, ordinance authorizing the purchase, to extend the purchase order to Verizon Wireless for wireless services for mobile data computers for the Omaha Fire, Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-three begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-four, ordinance to approve an agreement with Love Jazz and Art Center and the Bemis Center for Contemporary Art to authorize funding from our town grant awarded by the National Endowment for the Arts to provide funding for creative placemaking activities in Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-five, ordinance to approve an agreement between the city and the Women's Center for Advancement and the Douglas County Attorney's Office for funding from the Omaha, City of Omaha Douglas County Community Response Team grant to provide funding for coordinated community responses to domestic violence in Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-six, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the Omaha Police Department Metropolitan Drug Task Force grant from the State of Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement to provide funding to support the operation of the Metro Drug Task Force.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-seven, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the Omaha Police Department Nightlife Expansion Contract to provide funding for continuing enhanced selective enforcement operations and provide education and awareness to teen drivers and their parents.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-eight, ordinance to approve the acceptance of and authorized distribution of the PSN Program Award to provide funding to reduce gun and gang violence in Omaha and neighboring communities.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number sixty-nine, ordinance to approve the acceptance of the Ward of the United States Department of Justice Grant for law enforcement programs, prevention and education programs, correction programs, and planning evaluation and technology improvements.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixty-nine begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number seventy, ordinance to approve the acceptance of and authorized distribution of the Omaha Douglas County Juvenile Accountability Block Grant to provide funding for coordinated, coordination of criminal justice information sharing, juvenile risk and need assessment, as well as retroactive justice and reentry programs for juveniles throughout Douglas County.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number seventy-one, ordinance to amend section twenty-three, one seventy-seven by changing the salary for the employment classification on its city treasure.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-one begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number seventy-two, ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code Section thirty-eighty-one to exclude from the definition of salvage dealer, a person who operates premises used to recycle concrete or reinforce concrete.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Steve Graus, nine four zero South Two Hundred and Fifth Street, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I'm appearing today on behalf of Con Rico and appearing in support of the proposed ordinance amendment. First, I do want to thank Councilman Gernat for having the foresight to understand the very great importance of this amendment to the redevelopment prospects for North, South, and Central Omaha, as well as its importance to all of the taxpayers of the City of Omaha. I do also want to express my appreciation to Councilmen Gray and Morgan for the clarification that was provided this morning during the pre-meeting regarding the impact of the amendment. Finally, I do want to thank all the members of the council for facilitating the additional time since the introduction of this proposal a number of weeks ago so that we could work through the issue, and I do thank you for your time and attention to this matter. As you know, this amendment clarifies that concrete recycling is not subject to the regulations intended for salvage dealers. Con Rico is not a junk or scrap metal dealer, and we do not feel it should be regulated as such. With me today is actually both of the owners of Con Rico, Dave and Ron Fuchinero, and Dave would like to give some additional testimony in this matter, and then we would all be available for any questions that the council may have.
Please state your name and address.
David Fuchinero, and address is eleven nine oh five North One Hundred and Twenty-Sixth Street. And I'm a co-owner of Fuchinero Excavating Company and Con Rico, which has a concrete recycling plant located at forty-ten D Street in Omaha. Con Rico is one of the businesses that would be affected if the amendment is not made to the current scrap and salvage dealers license regulations. We also thank Councilman Gernat for sponsoring the amendment, which would give our company and others like it the certainty to continue for the good of the city of Omaha, and thanks to the whole city council for listening to our case. We at Con Rico receive broken concrete from hundreds of private contractors and governmental units such as the City of Omaha, MUD, and OPPD. We crush this useless concrete rubble, sort it, screen it, and remarket it to the same group of contractors and governmental units. Shortly after we started, we built an extremely small office consisting of a one-room office and a bathroom. We would now like to build a very modest, slightly larger office and shop. When we approached the city with our plans, we were informed that we needed to obtain a scrap and salvage dealer's license. In ninety-two, when we started our business, we obtained letters from the city stating that we would not need to obtain that scrap and salvage dealer's license, but now Con Rico and all the other concrete recyclers apparently would need to obtain it. The license applies to persons that are recycling metals. Con Rico really only recycles the small amount of metal that exists in the concrete rubble that we crush. So to obtain that dealer's license would be difficult, expensive, and unnecessary. Among the regulations contained in the language are requirements to fingerprint the drivers that drop off material to be recycled and reporting to the police department daily. We receive over three hundred thousand tons of broken concrete rubble annually. About half of that comes either from the City of Omaha crews directly or from the City of Omaha contracted projects. In fact, the City of Omaha crews are our sixth biggest customer. Our recycle yard is close to the work, especially to the redevelopment work in the eastern half of the city, which includes all the CSO sewer renovation work. We take that broken concrete and make three hundred thousand tons of construction aggregate products such as the sewer pipe vetting for the new CSO pipes. The material is a hundred percent recycled post-consumer content, meeting all the lead requirements for environmentally friendly construction. Because of our low tipping fees and low-cost aggregates and close proximity to the work, the total savings to the city and the construction community as a whole annually is over ten million dollars based just on Con Rico's business. So especially in this time of our city relative to the CSO combined sewer renovation projects, we feel the city cannot afford to jeopardize the future of Con Rico and other concrete recyclers. So in closing, please vote to adopt this amendment.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, my name is Kara Haybrook. I'm at two-one-one zero-two Reha Road in Springfield, Nebraska, but I'm the Vice President, General Manager, and owner of LG Roloff Construction Company here in Omaha. We have worked extensively in the past with the City of Omaha on multiple Public Works projects, most notably and most recently with a number of CSO projects. We are a business partner and customer of Con Rico. Con Rico's midtown location and the service it provides is strategic to us doing these jobs cost-effectively for the City of Omaha. In looking back over the last fifteen to twenty years of what we would call sewer separation or CSO projects, we have been able to knock millions of dollars off of our bids in cost comparison if we would have had to truck that material out to like the Douglas County landfill rather than going to a midtown location such as Con Rico. Also, the recycled aggregate material that we use for pipe vetting can be easily picked up while we dump and trucked back to our job sites. It's a more cost-effective material than crushed limestone, and it's easily obtainable. And it's a very productive and efficient operation for us to be able to truck unsuitable concrete out and bring suitable pipe vetting back in all in one trip. It's important for CSO to work to have that Con Rico facility there at that midtown location. It saves on a lot of trucking costs, fuel costs. It reduces the amount of traffic, truck traffic, going back and forth. It's also more environmentally friendly in that, you know, you're reducing fuel and those big trucks put out a lot of emissions and things like that, so it's overall better for the environment. It would be, I think, a bad move in the time of CSO and what it's costing the City of Omaha to take away one of the things that helps keep the costs of the projects down and also one of the things that provides a locally manufactured material that goes right back into these projects. I will conclude by stating that they've operated as a reputable salvage dealer for the past twenty years in their current location, and I would like to see you adopt this amendment. Councilman Gernat, thanks for sponsoring the amendment, and we respectfully ask the city council to vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Jim Gregory. I'm Executive Vice President of Hawkins Construction Company. We're at twenty-five sixteen Deer Park Boulevard. And I'd like to keep my comments very brief. The economic benefit to the city of having Con Rico where they're at has been huge. One of the items besides war and tearing streets and the cost effectiveness of us being able to prepare bids utilizing both their product as pipe vetting, surfacing, and road bases throughout the city of Omaha, but also using their facility as a, as Dave mentions, a tip zone, which is really where the broken concrete from our projects goes and gets recycled into his product. Those economic benefits cannot be overstated. Another issue that hasn't been mentioned is the fact that should contractors be forced to buy virgin aggregates outside of the perimeter of Omaha, which in the eastern Nebraska we are rich with them. Unfortunately, those aggregates are owned by interests that mainly reside out of state. When we write the checks for these aggregates, we feel good about writing them to family-owned Omaha businesses and not sending them to North Carolina or to overseas and to Scotland where some of the other aggregate companies or their headquarters are located. I would like to thank that although we live, contractors and contractor suppliers live in an area, in an era of overregulation and burdensome, and burdensome regulations on a daily basis, a lot of this has been forced on us most recently from the federal government, the EPA, Nebraska water quality people, and other sources. And I would, I believe, though, that we still have common sense government on the city level. For this reason, I am hoping you support Mr. Gerhardt's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to add my thanks to my colleagues for allowing that extra time for the applicant to sit down and work through some issues with our planning department. And I'd also like to extend that thanks to the planning department for sitting down at a roundtable and trying to work through these issues. Did it get to a point where there was going to be a major change? No, it looked like we'd have to go back to the original proposal, and that is what is before us today. I would ask the planning department, are you remaining neutral on this particular item?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department Director? Yes.
Thank you. Just recently, this council approved a scrap salvage expansion over on F Street. And they, to, they take scrap metal of all type, and that would require them, of course, to follow all of the requirements in the code for fingerprinting and reporting to the police department and having a enclosure fence around the facility, which, which they do on all of those points. The applicant, as stated, recycles concrete, asphalt, and dirt. The rebar that comes out of that is a byproduct, and they clean it all up, they put it in a truck, and take it over to the scrap dealer, and they probably get a few bucks and some change for all that, and that probably has to go into the fuel that costs them and the amount of time that they put in just to clean it up, because if they don't clean it up, it gets rejected. So they have to have the time, the machinery, and all of that stuff to make that happen. So that's not their job, or that's not how they make their living. But when the application came through for their building permit, planning department says, what you're going to need such and such, and we have to put you into a specific category, scrap and salvage dealer. And why, I don't think, since we do not have a column within our code that matches what Con Rico does, the closest thing we have is that salvage dealer one, I don't think that the system, I, this is not something against the director or any of his staff, I just don't think that the system is fair enough by holding a company that we don't have a label for hostage to do something because of the lack of a label. So this, yeah, it was a problem, but there's a simple solution with the amendment that is before us. So I would urge my colleagues next week to support this amendment, and if you think of one question that I would ask you to answer, when was the last time that you got a call from a constituent that their street was stolen? They work concrete, asphalt, and dirt, not scrap metal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Mr. Graus, could you come back down, please?
Steve Graus, nine four zero South Two Hundred and Fifth Street. Thank you. And I know you are always very, very thorough, but after, pre-council this morning, I was just reading through it again, and I just, and I support this, but I just want to make sure that we are achieving what we want to achieve.
This only amends section thirty. And I, as far as I can see, section thirty is the fingerprinting. It's fifty-five that deals with the salvage. Can you explain that to me? We want to make sure that...
Sure. Section thirty is the salvage dealer licensing section. Businesses also have to comply with zoning regulations in chapter fifty-five, and it's my understanding that in some respects there are duplicate requirements in both sections. However, section thirty is the one that we're dealing with here. The requirement that anyone delivering a load of material would be fingerprinted, the requirement that the recipient would have to record how much metal was received each day and report that to the police on a daily basis. Also, specific requirements for screening and other requirements that really didn't apply to concrete recycling. Of course, they've been at this location for twenty years doing concrete recycling, and they would still be subject to zoning requirements that the city would have, but they're not proposing a significant change in how they're using the property. They're just changing from a very small building to a slightly larger building at the same location, and everything else would remain the same.
So you don't see any need to do anything with fifty-five?
No, we do not.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk.
Item number seventy-three, ordinance to amend section thirty-one, one forty-five, and one forty-seven in municipal code dealing with sewer use fees to provide for sewer use service charges. And there's an amendment request by Councilman Stothard.
Mr. Gray, before we start the public hearing, if you would please summarize the agenda item number seventy-three for the public hearing of the audience, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Marty Gray, Public Works Department. As you're all aware, in two thousand and nine, we adopted a new rate ordinance that established rates that would extend through the year two thousand and fourteen and included annual rate increases that were substantial and primarily with the intent of funding our CSO improvements. The original rate philosophy that we used to gather those increased revenues leaned heavily on the concept that half of our revenues would come from a fixed customer charge and half of them would come from a variable flow charge. And when we looked at our rate revenue pie as to where the money was going to come from and in what quantities, about sixty-three percent of those revenues would come from residents, another nine percent would come from our wholesale customers, the communities that surround Omaha that use our system, twenty-three percent of it would come from the commercial customers, and five percent of it would come from the industrial customers. And just kind of thinking about it, that really doesn't sound too bad, but after we implemented the ordinance and got to really looking closely at the numbers and some of the projections, what we came to realize that was that that five percent of those costs that was relied upon from the industrial sector really boiled down to only twenty-nine individual accounts and about nineteen businesses, because some of these businesses had multiple industrial accounts. So when you started looking at the revenue requirements of that five percent, we found that there were some companies, when we looked out to the year two thousand and fourteen, when we get to the higher rates that we're headed towards, that some of these large companies were facing increases of several hundred thousand dollars a year, and that's on top of the already, over a million dollars a year that they're already paying for sewer use fees to begin with. So it was a very significant increase. We've been through a number of different reviews of the figures. We looked at a number of different alternative rates. What we really needed to do was come up with a rate alternative that, that was lawful, that met the standard of the law, but that accomplished three things. And one was that it continued to generate the amount of revenues that we needed to meet the federal mandate, that, number two, it did provide some form of relief, so it removed the undue hardship on these industries, and number three, that it didn't simply transfer that burden unduly to another rate payer class. Like I said, we looked at more than a dozen different alternatives. Some of them were proposed by our rate consultant, some of them by Public Works, some of them by the Chamber, some of them by the Industrial Coalition, and went back and forth trying to come up with that correct blend. And I think what you have before you today, it is a good compromise. I think it achieves those three goals that we were trying to do. We will get the revenue we need. I believe you'll hear from some of the other proponents that it does satisfy their need for economic relief from the otherwise large increases that we'll see. And I think that, given that there are twelve thousand five hundred commercial companies out there, that no one business should be unduly burdened. Everybody's going to see increases. We've always known that, and the intent here, again, is to just spread those costs in a fairer way than what we had before. With that, I'll answer any questions, and I'll certainly be around later if you need some.
Thank you, Marty. Public hearing on agenda item number seventy-three begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and councilmembers. I'm David Brown. I'm president of the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank you all for taking up this issue. For the past few years, the Chamber has been trying to keep up with what the impact of this mandated two billion dollar project from the EPA was going to mean on business costs and even the ability to develop different areas of the community where we've been involved in community development agendas over the past several years. A few years ago, a group of the industrial users started making it clear that A few years ago, a group of the industrial users started making it clear that there was a challenge with the rate schedule and that it was something that was going to cause them to seriously consider whether or not they could be competitive in this marketplace. We take those kinds of concerns very seriously as your economic development representative and the regional economic development organization here. So we began to do some research and found that those 19 companies that Marty talked about represent about $2.5 billion a year in annual economic impact on this region. And either directly or indirectly employ about 16,000 people. That's a huge part of our economy here. It is equal to the impact of Offutt Air Force Base on this metro area, to try and give you an idea of scale. We started working with the industrial group, with the city, to try and find if there were some alternatives, some ways that we hadn't thought through yet that could potentially replace some of the rate schedule that was in place already. And finally, after really several years, a couple of years, of going back and forth and trying to figure out a way that all sides could be dealt with, one of our more brilliant executive committee members suggested that maybe we hire a professional mediator, someone who is used to getting in the middle of arguments and trying to figure out a way to solve them. So we did. We hired Mike Mullen from the Q-Tech Rock firm, who is a professional attorney, who is a mediator for his daily business. And we started with a 6:00 AM meeting with Mike, because that was the only time he had available that day with the Public Works Department, with the mayor's office, and some members of City Council to talk about, "We have a problem, and we'd be willing to go through a mediation process to try and solve this, get to a point where we have a more appropriate fee schedule in place." I also remember a 7:30 at night meeting with members of the Public Works Committee, where we came and informed them about what was going on, so that we kept people involved in the process. And in the end, I think we came up with a solution that is reasonable. Now, we know that there's only three ways to ultimately reduce the impact on a group of businesses from this really large project. One is to reduce the cost of the project. We know that the city continues to try and do that, but that's probably a long-term proposition. We ought to keep trying to do that, but nonetheless, it is not something that we know can happen quickly. Secondly, get the federal government to pay for it. So far, that hasn't worked. Now, we continue to seek that, and I know the mayor continues to ask the federal government for support here, but once again, that's not something that can be fixed short term. And then the other is to try and spread the costs differently over the 13,000 or so businesses that pay sewer bills and water bills in this community. And so we've gone through a process with the Public Works Department and with the rate consultant from the city to try and come up with a methodology that we thought more fairly deals with the industrial users, keeps them competitive and able to continue adding employment here, but then also is not so onerous to the small business community that we make them non-competitive as a result of this change. Don't get me wrong, no one likes to see fees go up. We have been pretty clear about that, our situation, our opinion on that over the years at the Chamber. But this is one of those circumstances where we've got to pay the bill some way or another. If, in a terrible circumstance, one of these businesses did decide to leave because they couldn't be competitive here, somebody still has to pay the bill. And so the bill would have been spread across all the rate payers in a different way anyway. So our goal was to try and get ahead of the curve, try and figure out a way that would work for both industrial users and as many of the other small businesses in the community that we could. So the Chamber stands here in front of you today in support of this project. There's several people that need to be thanked, I think, for the process that we've gone through, the mayor's office, and Marty Gray, and Bob Stube from the Public Works Department. They and their rate consultant worked tirelessly to try and find a solution that would meet the criteria that Marty already talked about. Tim Stewart from our staff, who I know personally went through 12,500 different water bills, and he is here. Tim is back here. Tim, could you stand up for a second? He's the guy that did all the work. I get to stand up here and say the pretty words, but he did all the work on the behalf of our organization, I should say. Not to diminish it, all the work that all the other groups did here, too, but I know Tim from our staff spent a lot of time trying to figure out where the anomalies were in this, just so we could ask questions ahead of time, so we could make sure that the formula worked for as many people as possible. Mike Mullen, who literally spent hours and hours and hours on this and was able to use his mediation skills to make this work. The industrial users, who were very forthright in the issues that they raised and very committed to making this work, absent their engagement in this, some of the really cool ideas that we came up with, I'm not so sure would have been considered, so it was great to have them involved here. Public Works Committee, without whom this wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you very much for your work, and the members of council for being willing to consider this proposal and move us into the next step. We wholeheartedly support the proposal that's in front of you and hope that it will move forward and we can move on to bigger and better things. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Plucker, 12614 Deer Hollow Drive. I'm here today in support of the amendment to the sewer rate ordinance, and this has been a long time in the making. I'm thrilled to be standing up here, finally, at the tail end of this agreement and all the work we've put into it. I won't take much of your time today, because we do have some representative from industrial companies who'd like to talk to you for a few minutes. I'm mostly here to answer questions and to represent those companies in our coalition that aren't able to speak today, including Tyson Foods, Darling International, American Labs, Cintas, AmeriPride, John Roth and Sons, XL Four Star, and John Morrell Food Group. I also want to echo David's sentiments and really thank the groups that were involved in this. It seemed for a while that we weren't going to come to an agreement, and I think we're all very pleased to stand here in front of you today. Absolutely want to thank the Chamber, David Brown, and Tim Stewart for coming up with the wonderfully skilled mediator, Mike Mullen, who did a fabulous job. And I think the reason I like him so much is we did not have any 6:00 AM meetings, so I'm happy for that. Thank you, Mike. The Public Works Department, Bob Stube, and Marty Gray has answered every question for us. We've bugged him for countless hours, and we appreciate his help. As well as the City Council and the Public Works Committee and the rest of the members, you guys have heard from us for a number of years on this, and we appreciate your leadership in helping us work with the Chamber and with the city and with all the groups that needed to come together. We feel like we're up here with a successful result. It ensures that these 19 companies are not unfairly burdened. We now have a level playing field with our competitors within Omaha and outside of Omaha and the state of Nebraska. We compete on a global basis in a number of these companies, and keeping these rates down helps us be competitive. I would like to point out that this proposal did not increase residential rates at all. That was very important to the companies going in. I know it was important to the Chamber, and it was important to you all. The residents' rates, although they're going up because everybody's got to help pay for this project, this proposal does not impact those fees. And we're just happy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Henry Davis, 116 South 92nd Street. I am a proponent. I am the president of Greater Omaha Packing Company, located at 3001 L Street. At Greater Omaha, we process 2,400 head of steers per day, producing beef that is sold both domestically into over 30 countries. I am one of the larger industrial water users in the city, and I employ more than 850 people. Omaha Chamber published a document on May 18, 2012, stating that the total cost of the CSO project, including finance costs, will be over $3 billion. The current formula in place to pay for the rebuilding of the infrastructure of the utility systems of our city is based on the use of potable water. Yet, the use of potable water is not what creates the overflows of untreated water into the Missouri River. The Environmental Services Manager of the city has stated that on a Sunday, when industrial water usage is at a minimum, one-tenth of an inch of rain across the city will cause a stormwater runoff overflow event whereby untreated water will flow into the river. The payoff of this $3-plus-billion-dollar project using the formula currently in place is very biased against large water users. The largest water user will be forced to pay over $40 million, while a Home Depot, Best Buy, or Target will have to pay only $46,000 over the same time period. Yet, the impervious areas and parking lots of these companies, which create this problem, are of similar size. This project will take more than $3 billion out of our economy. Profitable companies that can afford to pay more are only being taxed 1/100 of the amount that some of our biggest employers are, such as Kellogg's employing over 500, Nebraska Beef employing over 1,000, Skinner Baking employing over 450, Tyson Foods over 300 employees, XL Four Star with over 600 employees, and Robert's Dairy with over 100 employees. There are 19 industrial water users who are being taxed 5% of the $3 billion cost, and 12,500 commercial water users who will pay 20% of the cost. This means that the average industrial water user must pay 170 times as much as a department store or a movie theater. For every $1,000 that a Menard Shopko or Shopko is taxed, the average industrial water user would have to pay $170,000. Seven of the industrial water users are located in Omaha's enterprise zones, which are the areas of our city that suffer with the highest unemployment. Many companies like Greater Omaha compete domestically and internationally. We sell beef into every state and into 30 countries, so we must compete with producers of beef all over the world. In order to stay in business, we must be competitive. For all of us industrial water users, unjust fees will force us into unprofitable situation that is not sustainable and ultimately lead to the loss of thousands of jobs. Three years ago, I organized this group. With the help of the Omaha Chamber of Commerce, who hired Mike Mullen, a mediator from Q-Tech Rock, a memorandum of understanding was agreed to and signed on September 18 of 2012 by David Brown, president of the Omaha Chamber of Commerce and representatives of the city of Omaha, the Red Oak Consulting Group, and the Save Omaha Jobs Coalition. The memorandum of understanding was an outline of the ordinance, which creates a fair method to pay for this project. We appreciate the city council's continued interest and help the last three years, as your guidance was instrumental in maintaining Omaha's business-friendly reputation. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Next, please.
Audie Keaton, 11827 South 47th Papillion. First of all, I guess I would like to thank everybody today that has been involved with it, the people that I've worked with here in the coalition to come to an understanding to this ordinance. I'd like to thank the Chamber. They were instrumental in working with our coalition to come to a resolution. The city, the council here, and Mike Mullen from Q-Tech Rock. Thank you. Once again, I'm Audie Keaton. I'm the president of Skinner Baking. The Skinner family's been in Omaha for well over 100 years. You don't have to go very far to see the impact that the Skinner family has made on Omaha. You can look at the tops of the buildings in the old market, South Omaha, or look at the silos along the interstate as you drive down. We're a new generation of the Skinner family, and our product is from the east coast to the west coast. We service all of the independents, most of the wholesalers, and we sell through Walmart, Target, Kroger, Safeway, and recently, Publix. What I, I'm not going to repeat everything that Henry went through just now, but what I do want to say is, with the era of, the area of regulation that we have to withstand in the economy that we're working within and the Affordable Healthcare Act, it's important that we remain competitive and are able to compete outside of this state, within this community. And this resolution, this ordinance here, we believe will help us to maintain that. I want to thank the city council for coming forth and supporting this, and I ask that you vote positive next week. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Tanisha Sanders, 1331 Trotters Lane, Williamson, Michigan. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Tanisha Sanders. I'm Director of Government Relations for Kellogg Company in Battle Creek, Michigan. This certainly has been a long time coming, as Julia indicated earlier. It brings me great pleasure to stand here before you with the support that we do have. I thank you, members of council, for your continued support on this issue. We certainly hope that we can count on your support as you consider the newly proposed rate structure that has been negotiated by the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Omaha. Together, these individuals have worked tirelessly to reach a compromise and produce a fair and equitable solution to fund this government mandate. I, on behalf of the employees of Kellogg Company, applaud everyone here in this room for their efforts. Kellogg Company strongly supports the new CSO rate structure and believes that the passage of this ordinance will be a monumental win for the entire Omaha community. On behalf of the Kellogg Company Omaha employees, we appreciate your continued support, and we hope that you will strongly consider the passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent.
My name's James Timmerman, 804 South 92nd Street. I am a vice president at Nebraska Beef. The company is located in South Omaha at 36 and L Street. Nebraska Beef is a locally open company founded in 1995 by a group of investors from the Omaha area. The company purchased and remodeled an existing packing plant and also added an addition for its processing facility. Nebraska Beef processes 2,000 head of cattle per day. The company sells its products throughout the United States into many different countries internationally. Most of the cattle we purchase are from within a 250-mile radius of the Omaha area. Therefore, we bring in millions of dollars from all over the world and spend those dollars locally. Nebraska Beef employs approximately 1,000 people. Nebraska Beef offers well-paying jobs, and employees receive excellent benefits, including low-cost health insurance, dental and optical insurance, life insurance, and a 401K plan with a 1.5% employer match. Nebraska Beef is involved with many different charitable organizations within the South Omaha area and in Omaha as a whole. We have supported many groups, particularly in the areas of education and healthcare for members of the South Omaha community. Most recently, we partnered with One World Community Health Center and other community organizations for the Bi-National Health Week. This health fair assists many people in the South Omaha area getting health screenings, such as cholesterol and glucose checks, dental screenings, and flu shots, free of charge. I am here today in support of the new CSO rate change ordinance. I believe the new ordinance is fair to all industrial and commercial users in the city of Omaha. The current rate structure places an unfair burden on the large industrial users. The CSO problem is not one due to the sewer use of companies such as Nebraska Beef. It is a citywide problem due to stormwater runoff. Nebraska Beef pays its fair share for the water it uses in its production facility. We pay for all the water that comes into the facility and pay the appropriate charges for the extra BODs and suspended solids we admit in the city of Omaha sewer system. Nebraska Beef competes with businesses nationally and internationally. The current rate structure puts it at a competitive disadvantage with its business competitors due to the high utility costs the company now has to absorb. Although Nebraska Beef is an Omaha-based company and would like to remain that way, these high utility costs would force us to look at other cities for any future expansion plans. The new rate structure will allow Nebraska Beef to compete in the national and international marketplace and keep any business and employment growth in the city of Omaha. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Ron Widman. I'm at 1001 South 113th Street. I own Widman Motors at 50th and L Street. A large percentage of the buyers of the cars that I sell work at one of the three major packing plants in South Omaha. Nearly 100% of my buyers live in the South Omaha area. As I understand the situation, the cost to rebuild the utility infrastructure of the city is disproportionately being paid by the companies that are the industrial water users, and this may force them to relocate. These companies, like Nebraska Beef, Skinner Baking, Greater Omaha, XL Four Star, employ the majority of my customers. According to the new rate schedule, I will pay $6.91 per month more in 2013, and in 2014, I will pay $11.24 more per month. I want to pay my fair share of the cost of this project, because without these companies in my area, my business would be definitely severely impacted. So, that's why I'd say, thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent. Next proponent.
Good afternoon, John Decker, 1000 Fort Crook Road, Bellevue, Nebraska. Currently the president and owner of MBA Suppliers, a business that has been located in Omaha for the past 19 years. We supply products to many of the industrial users here that may be impacted. First, I want to thank and echo the sentiments of others that have presented, the members of city council and staff, and the Chamber of Commerce for their efforts in working toward a fair formula to finance the combined sewer project that the citizens of Omaha face. As a business operator in Omaha, I feel that a competitive environment for growth is the best policy for Omaha and also for the state. This community is striving to be regionally and nationally competitive for businesses, and as a result, to foster strong job growth for its citizens. Policies that support and enhance our competitive business environment are only logical to remaining on a competitive path and providing an infrastructure supportive of growing Omaha businesses. It is my belief that the changes to the rate structure being presented here today are the fairest way to distribute the cost to the business community in the City of Omaha. Each community which has been affected has to find creative ways to pay for these costs. While I understand some businesses in the city, including my own company, may pay slightly more under the proposed rate structure, I believe the coalition has come to the fairest possible solution for all citizens of Omaha, and I encourage you today to pass the resolution to make the changes to the CSO project financing. Thank you again for this opportunity and for your diligent efforts to fairly accommodate this federal mandate.
Next proponent.
Good afternoon, my name is Larry Johnson, I live at 1729 North 160th Street here in Omaha, and I'm here to represent the Nebraska Trucking Association and its 13,500 trucking companies across the state that call Nebraska home. One of our concerns, as we look at the potential of any of these 19 companies possibly leaving Omaha or the Nebraska area, would be that they are large producers of freight, and an unintended consequence of that would be a huge impact on the trucking and transportation industry in not only Omaha but across Nebraska, as we look at live cattle coming in and product coming out. Even larger, when we look at one of the benefits of Nebraska being in the center of everywhere, and transportation, distribution, warehousing, and logistics being a key business development and investment industry for our state, that because of the freight these folks create, it creates a balance of freight in, out, and through Nebraska, which does allow us a huge logistics advantage that keeps freight rates lower for other companies that would be interested in coming to Nebraska. So, we would hope that you would support this amendment to keep those folks here and continue that opportunity for growth in the transportation industry as well. Open to any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next proponent.
Hello, Ken Burson, 10806 Popleton Avenue. I do business with all of these folks, and I've been working with them for years. Audie termed the phrase, I think, war on water, trying to conserve on water. All of them are looking to be much more conservative in their usage. I employ 14 people. If these people were to downsize, it would greatly affect my business. I understand that, I've heard, I've been tracking these meetings since pretty early on, and it seemed like quite an intense burden upon these few industries to take the entire blunt of this massive project. I understand it's going to bring my personal rates up, I understand it's going to bring my rates of my business up, but I'm all for getting this resolved and for the new recommendations of the new structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Moore, 820 South 67th Street. I'm here today to represent the Omaha Federation of Labor and its 31 local unions that have voted unanimously to support this resolve. Obviously, I too want to go on record, supporting all the people that are involved in trying to come to this resolve at the end of the day, that's going to save us jobs. And when you think of those jobs that we're saving in our community, you have to think about these good corporate citizens that have done an awful lot for us in this community. I've had the privilege to work with many of them, Lloyd Skinner, Kellogg Company, Penny Davis, and others. And they've all stepped up always to what had to be done in this community. But I decided just to bring, more than just saying, please vote for this, I want to just take one and tell you just a little bit about one, and this reflects across the board to all of them. This is Kellogg Company. It's got Kellogg employees, $65 million. Outside contractors, $15 million. This is what's spent. 2011 taxes and utilities, property taxes, were $2 million. Gas, electricity, water, and sewer was $10 million. United Way contributions to our community that we all work hard for, $200,000. Cash donations to others, $50,000. Food bank donations, $250,000. I could go on with this list of good corporate citizens and what they've done, and I surely encourage all of you to vote positive on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Please state your name and address.
Kimberly Macias of 2324 North 49th Street. I am here today as a private citizen, I don't represent any large corporations, nor do I have any lobbyists here representing me, except for you fine people. And I just really have a question about the amendment, and that is, if private citizens are already paying 63% of the cost for these sewer fees, and these corporations have said that they use the most, and they have the most runoff, but don't find it fair that they should pay their appropriate portion of the taxes for the infrastructure that they need to do business, I'm just wondering, who actually is going to pay those fees that they don't want to pay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other opponents?
Hello, thank you. My name's Dan Hanson, 6312 North 155th Avenue Circle. First of all, I'm not a seasoned public speaker, so I apologize for any choppiness, but as the lady had asked just a second ago, who's going to pay for these fees, I am here representing the Apartment Association of Greater Omaha and Lincoln area. As you know, and we've had other people come up here and say that they're going to be increased every month, but they're willing to take that increase. That's great, because most of these companies that are the general commercial lines have one general commercial line. So they're going to have $10 increase, something like that. The apartment industry, for example, I have 314 apartments where I currently work at. That's pretty average size for Omaha. Currently, there's over 500 apartments in Omaha, and over 40, there's 40% of people in the Omaha housing market that are renters. So it's a very large portion of our community. Out of my community, we have 28 separate individual meters. Each individual building needs to be metered separately. What that means is each individual meter is going to be increased by roughly $72 each month. This isn't, now granted, there will be the decreased per CCF cost, but when it comes to a percentage increase, the apartment industry is looking anywhere between 40 and 150% increase per month on their sewer bill, sewer alone, doesn't include water increases that are also going to be becoming. So, and in apartments like mine, which is 314 units, the increase is going to be roughly $20,000 per year just for sewer. A lot of people don't understand how that works in the apartment industry, and the apartment industry was not, as far as I know, represented when this plane was taking place, and I apologize for not having someone that knows more or is a better speaker than I am to go over all this, but I just wanted to let you guys know that there is someone else that's taking this burden on, and it's not a 5%, a 10%, 15%, a 20% increase, we're talking double what the normal bills are. And not to mention, they said residents aren't affected by this, residents are going to be affected by this. Their apartments throughout Omaha are going to be left with no choice but to pass these charges on to the residents of Omaha. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? I'd like to give the proponents rebuttal time if somebody would like to make any further
Julia Pucker, 12614 Deer Hollow Drive. Just wanted to again thank everybody involved, and stress again that this rate structure formula does not increase residential rates any more than the 63% of the burden they have. Instead, it does spread them throughout the 12,500 commercial businesses, and, you know, we think that puts us on a fair and equitable playing field, which is all we've asked. We know there's going to be increases, we know this is an unfunded federal mandate, and the largest infrastructure project that has ever been undertaken in the state of Nebraska, not just the City of Omaha, and we're willing to pay our fair share, and we would like to thank everybody involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernant.
I for one will certainly remember that 6:00 AM meeting, as will my dog's schedule Representing southeast Omaha, I can tell you, I certainly heard from the packing industry and the baking industry in regards to their concerns, loud and clear. I know my colleague on the Public Works Committee heard from the industry out in her district, loud and clear. One of the questions in my mind was always, when this started years ago, I asked Mr. Gray, if we lower somebody else's, somebody else's cost has to go up. And I believe his answer was still, as it is today, yes, that's basically correct. The formula at that time, that Mr. Gray mentioned at the opening testimony here today, seemed to be acceptable at that time. We heard from the industries, this was not, in their minds, fair. We have a classic example of taking the time and getting around the table and talking this out. This is a classic example of not rushing something, taking the time to talk about it, and making sure that we do have as close to a level playing field as we possibly can. With that said, Marty, would you come back up? We've had a couple of concerns through the opposition, obviously you heard it, would you be able to address those concerns regarding?
Marty, great public works, and I think Julia pointed it out, that under the rate alternative that's under consideration here, it will not impact the rate increases that already are in the ordinance for residential customers. That 63% will stay the same. Similarly, with our wholesale customers, their 9% contribution will remain static under this alternative. But really what is in play here is that 28% of the cost that currently is being gathered from the combination of commercial and industrial customers. And what this will do is it will help relieve some of that 5% burden on those 19 companies and spread it more evenly across the commercial customers. The gentleman that was up here talking about the cost impacts that that would have on apartment buildings, I can't confirm or deny his specific figures, but certainly those apartment facilities are already facing increases, and in likelihood, most of those customers will see a nominal additional increase. If you take them and mass them all together, yes, it could amount to thousands of dollars. But again, what we're looking at here with the industrial customers is that those largest water users were facing several hundred thousands of dollars each a year for the CSO cost, and this will bring them down into tens of thousands of dollars a year. There's not, they're getting off scot-free, but it'll bring them down into the realm of the tens of thousands of dollars. And at the same time, there may be commercial customers or commercial customer classes that see increases of, you know, not only 5, 10, maybe $50, maybe $70, but we're not seeing the hundreds of thousands of dollars, or for the commercial customers, the tens of thousands of dollars that we are looking. So, certainly, these cost increases are not to be minimized, they're significant for our residents at the 63%, they're significant for our commercial folks under the existing ordinance and under the proposed, and even with the proposed alternative, the costs are still significant for the industrial customers. So, nobody's trying to minimize the fact that these are significant increases, but we are convinced at this point in time that the rate alternative before you increases the fairness of our system.
The, these apartment complexes that were alluded to in earlier testimony, residential or a commercial great group, they'll have also an opportunity, since we're going to be gauging this on the meter size, that if there is a concern, those concerns still can be addressed. I mean, we're not putting a tourniquet on this thing where, you know, everybody gets choked off at a certain point and they can't do anything about it. This all can be looked at as we get into these things, correct?
Certainly, there's still room for evaluation and for fine tuning along the way. One of the issues which you kind of raised there is there's an assertion by some of the apartment managers that really they're a residential facility, they're not a commercial facility. But under our ordinance right now, the definition of a residential facility is a single-family dwelling. If there's two or more residences in a building, by our ordinance, it's commercial and falls into that commercial class. The other thing I need to mention is that the Metropolitan Utilities District is really the one that controls what size of water meter is appropriate for a facility in order to accurately measure their use. And while there may be some room for some of these facilities to reassess their water demand and the capacity needs, and potentially change their meter, which could impact their bills, we have to understand that that's really MUD's call at the end of the day, and the Metropolitan Utilities District is also reliant upon this kind of revenue. So it's not something that we have total control over. But that being said, you know, my answer right now, today with the ordinance asset exist to some of these apartment and condominium owners is, really under today's ordinance, the only way that we could really change their accounts from the commercial to the residential side would be go back in each dwelling unit of a building and install an individual residential meter, and if you accumulated all of those individual residential costs, I think the combined commercial meter, one for a building, is probably less expensive than that alternative. So again, it's something that we can continue to look at. I know Warren has mentioned to you that this step is a step to improve the fairness of our existing ordinance, but over the next six months to a year, we'll be looking again at the next rate ordinance that will take the year 15 through 18. And during that process, if we come up with something to further improve the fairness of our rate structure, we'll certainly do so, and we remain open to those discussions.
Thank you. Thanks, Marty. I would just close that I know that this wouldn't even touch where our commercial and our industry folks are, what they're paying, but just as an example, I'll use my own, I noticed my sewer use fee at my home. I started out, when this whole thing was at $8. My bill now is $20 just for that sewer use fee. And I have to accept the fact that that's going to be incrementally going up until, well, through 2024, I believe, is when this program comes to fruition. So, all of us are affected. Everybody on the council more than likely has looked at their sewer use bill and seen the increase. So, and I know my colleague, Mrs. Stothard, has an amendment, and I believe she's next up, so thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. And as chairman of the Public Works Committee, and my committee is Councilman Thompson and Gernant, we've talked about this for over three years now in our committee meetings, and recognize that the problem that we had with this, and we're interested in working on something to resolve it. In the last several months, we've also worked with the representatives from the Public Works, from Greater Omaha Chamber, from the city, from the large industrial users, including Kellogg, and worked collaboratively to come up with a compromise, and I think we're all ... And I think we're all pretty satisfied with what we came up with. Is it perfect? No, there are still going to be people paying more for these charges. There's no doubt about it. But when you have an unfunded federal mandate, you've got to work with what you have. And just saying no, or saying, as one of our local groups said a couple of months ago, "Go pound sand, EPA," or "Just say no to the EPA," that's really not a logical solution for it. Our goals all along were preserving local jobs, we're making the fee more fair and equitable, and then also to protect the current rate structure for homeowners. And I want to stress, keeping businesses and jobs in Omaha was our top priority. I did want to ask a few questions, and I guess I'll start with Marty, if you could come back up again. I guess you've got to say your name again.
Marty Gray, Public Works.
And do you have, I should have asked you ahead of time so you'd have the figures, but do you by any chance have just the average increase for the commercial customers? Do you know what that would be over the 15-year period?
No, I don't. And it's really difficult to come up with those averages. When we migrated the CSO cost to a meter equivalency, within each meter class, there are some businesses that use less than a certain amount of water that are going to see increases over the status quo. But if those same-sized water meters are in another facility where they're over that essentially break-even point, they may see decreases, even if they're not industry. So it's very difficult to come up with averages under this capacity-based meter equivalency program.
Okay. And speak a little bit, you organized two community meetings, correct?
That's correct.
Can you just briefly say what you did with that?
Yeah. Early this month, we sent out letters to each of the 12,500-plus commercial and industrial customers announcing that we would have open house meetings where we would have staff people there that were knowledgeable and had the tools to be able to take a customer's bill and sit down and run through the calculations and show, if this is what you're paying in September of 2012, under the prevailing ordinance, this is what you would pay in that same month in '13 and 2014. And then conversely, if this amendment is adopted, you would pay this amount. And again, because we're taking a handful of the largest users and trying to minimize some of their rate increases, by and large, most of the people in the commercial class are going to see a minor increase. But we did also have some commercial customers that came in and walked away saying, "It actually works better for me, too." Again, just common sense tells you that if we've got people that are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a month or a year for CSO costs, and we're going to bring them down to the tens of thousands, that these 12,500 commercial customers, by and large, on average, are going to see additional increases. But again, you have to really look within each meter size and how that use matches with the meter size to really say on a case-by-case basis.
And then also speak to, on the website, you have a calculator tool.
Right. The attendance that we saw at our open house meetings wasn't overwhelming. We saw about 25 on the first one and about 35 companies that came in and sat down and walked away with a printout. But we had another almost 100 calls that came into our hotline, people that wanted to talk through it, and we could work through with that. And last I heard, we had over 15,000 hits on our website where we have a calculator, where again, people can take out a copy of the recent bill and can sit down and plug in just a few numbers into a little calculator module on there, and it'll tell them, you know, what their rates will be under the existing ordinance and under the proposed amendment.
Okay. And then one of the speakers, I think she stepped out, but who spoke in opposition, Kim Macias, she made the statement that these industrial customers have the most runoff, is what she said, I quote. And then she went on to say basically that, so they should be paying for more of it. They weren't being charged based on runoff, correct? They were being charged originally based on the amount of water they use, and that really wasn't what was contributing to the problem. It is the runoff.
Yeah, you're correct. And then Mr. Davis mentioned to it when he was providing his testimony, that early on, when we started looking at the existing rate structure, which does, at least half of the CSO costs are gathered based upon the amount of water discharge, but it's really not the sewage being discharged that's causing the combined sewer overflows, it's when you add the rain component. And one of the alternatives that we considered was moving towards perhaps a system that gathered fees based upon runoff coefficients. And that's something that we've been looking at for years and years and years and working through the Nebraska Legislature, trying to obtain the innate authority to pursue that route. We've never been successful at getting that kind of enabling legislation, and we still lacked that here. We did, like you said, we've been on this for almost three years now. We did very early on go down to Lincoln, we talked with the Legislature, we talked with the governor's office, and there was just no appetite for pursuing that particular approach. So even though in some sense, from a scientific basis, a runoff-based rate system may be the most fair, it's not an option that we really have available to us. And so that's why we moved from beyond the water use to this equivalence, because it's another way to kind of get at capacity without penalizing the customers that just use a lot of water.
And so for those who are listening, you're talking about the impervious surfaces.
Right. Impervious surfaces, rooftops and concrete.
So that would include car dealers, that would include shopping malls, schools, all of those with big concrete areas?
They would pair a larger share under a rate system like that, yes.
And actually, the cause of the problem is being caused more by those impervious surfaces than by the amount of water that these industrial customers use.
It is the runoff that's driving the overflow, is correct.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I did want to tell the council, one other, I did propose an amendment, and I just wanted to discuss it briefly, because the amendment, all it does is give direction for an audit of cost once every five years, and it was originally called for. And this would be an audit before the next rate ordinance then would be put on the council agenda for approval. So at least every five years that there will be an audit. And that's all the amendment is. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thanks to everyone who's here today. And on an issue this complicated, it takes a coalition to come together and work on it like we have today. And I think it's clear today, this coalition has worked together and is presenting a reasonable solution for us to consider. And I also appreciate virtually everyone who acknowledged this is a federal mandate, frustrating, but true, and something we have to do. And I liked the way Mr. Brown broke it down into the three very simple options we have as a city right now, which is you reduce the overall cost for everyone, or you can revamp the rates like we're talking about today and do so in a fair and equitable way amongst the commercial users to save jobs and diminish the impact on the community in that respect. And then thirdly, we can continue our conversation with the federal government about their participation in reducing the cost of this for our community as well. I'm supportive of remapping the rates we're talking about today. I think it's reasonable, and it is fair and equitable amongst the commercial users. I think we need to continue our efforts to reduce our overall cost with Washington, but I don't have a lot of faith in that, to tell you the truth. I think that our federal government's not in good financial shape, and we've had about over, approximately 700 cities already have to do this program of work. And so I'm not sure we can count on substantial help from that segment, but we should continue to try. So that leaves us with, how do we reduce the overall cost for everyone? And I wanted to ask Mr. Gray a couple of questions about that and maybe a couple of updates for everybody. So I know that we've done a number of things already. I know we're looking at natural elements to reduce the cost of construction. We've already extended the years by which we have to do this program of work, by three years, I believe. This council has authorized some water testing of the river to monitor our progress towards the standards we must meet. And we've also had a lot of conversation about the large tunnel aspect of this project, which I believe was about one-third of this overall cost. Can you give us an update on those things and other things we're working on to reduce this overall cost for everyone?
Sure. Mayor Suttle continues to challenge our program team to look at enhancements to the existing program. We're not backing away from our responsibility under our consent order and our permits for CSO, but the mayor feels strongly that there are opportunities out there to look at ways that we can reduce the cost of the program through green solutions, that is, capturing the stormwater and either holding it on the ground or getting it to soak in so it doesn't get into the sewers in the first place. Another opportunity that the mayor has challenged us to pursue, and we actually are working with EPA and some other partners across the nation, is looking at opportunities for new technologies. One of the components of our existing plan that's scheduled for the latter part of our compliance schedule is that deep rock tunnel, which is a very expensive element. And the mayor believes that if it doesn't exist now, maybe by the time we get there or before, that there may be a technician to provide some kind of high-rate treatment that wouldn't necessitate so much gray infrastructure, so much construction. We've recently developed a couple of different partnerships with EPA through their Office of Water and their Office of Research and Development to look at different green solutions that we might employ and how to maximize the benefit. That being said, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that we found that game changer that's suddenly going to, you know, dramatically reduce these costs, but we are being very diligent and looking for opportunities to reduce cost anywhere we can. And we're also trying to remain cognizant of efforts going across the country to look for that game changer.
Okay. And if this is approved next week, this changes the current structure through 2014?
That's correct.
And starts January 1st, 2013. So in about a year from now, we need to consider the next round of how we're affording this project and how we're paying for it. Can you give us any assurance we'll have some additional information before then on these items and possible options to reduce the overall cost?
Yeah, we're meeting with the mayor's office every 60 days or so. We have quarterly meetings with the state of Nebraska. You know, these are ongoing efforts to look at ways to reduce cost. And we'll continue those, and certainly we'll be able to provide an update as part of our permit requirements. In 2013, 2014, we have to advise the state on how our long-term control plan may be adapting to any changes. So yeah, we certainly are not in the mode of a plan where we're just blindly following a schedule. We're looking for opportunities wherever we can, and, you know, we've already identified some areas where we can find cost savings, so that will continue.
Okay. I urge you to keep working on those things, and I know everyone in the room here would be interested in participating as well. Thanks.
Mr. Jarom.
Yes, I'd like to join in the chorus for those of the, extending my thanks to people who worked so hard to get us to this point. Goes without saying that had the chamber not stepped in and the committee and the mayor's office and the chamber, to the person crunching the numbers, 13,000 bills, can you imagine if you got assigned that task to do? And he's still standing here today, so you need a "I survived" button or something. But I think that the core group that formed, had you not been so persistent, that we wouldn't have been here, certainly not today, maybe further down the line, and maybe when it was too late, maybe when decisions could have been made to expand elsewhere to other properties that you own or other opportunities that were presented to you. And that wasn't mentioned here today, but some of these businesses have been pitched other locations in other cities. And this compromise provides a framework so that they can expand right here in Omaha. And so that, we cannot underscore the importance of that enough. You know, it goes without saying that the city and its partners need to be pursuing every technological and feasible means for reducing the cost and scope of this project. But one of the things and lessons learned that I became aware of when I traveled to Portland almost three years ago to learn from them as they were coming through the tail end of their CSO project, I asked the project manager, I think the equivalent of the Marty Gray of Portland, Oregon, a little taller, slimmer guy than you.
Better looking.
Better looking, but same goes for me, too, I guess. Was that he said, "If there's any way, I can urge you to have your city be more transparent in terms of educating the public, is the true cost of the project and not using the today dollar, but the overall dollar." And into constantly educating them as to those costs. That's one lesson learned from Portland, that, you know, when I was, when we, many of us on this council were running for our term, we heard about the billion-dollar CSO project, or the 1.2 or 1.3. And it wasn't long before people were talking about two. And now we're hearing three. And just when will this end? And this audit process of looking at how we're doing in terms of bringing in projects at or below cost, or whether we're having overruns, is very important in that discussion, as well as the innovations that we need to be pursuing. And by no means am I saying that what's happening at Elmwood Park or Spring Lake Park or Fontanel Park in terms of making some eco-friendly accommodations to handling stormwater runoff in our existing green spaces is the solution, but certainly a part of the solutions that will help us achieve savings in this area. The smaller we can make those pipes, the less water we have to treat, the less expensive it will be. I don't know if avoiding the tunnel will be possible, but it's certainly something that you can count me in on as those who are willing to pursue other alternatives and to advocate for them. So again, I realize you can't, no good deed goes unpunished, as you've heard here today. One group's rates go down and others will be adjusted modestly on the upside. And for that, I understand and I appreciate and sympathize with you. But I'm willing to support this. I think it's been a hard struck deal. I know Mike Mullin from years of being across the table from himself, and somehow he manages to get it done 95 or better percent of the time. And so he doesn't give up on the parties, and so I can see why we're here today. So thank you, Mike.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. President, the hour is getting late, and so I'll save most of my comments for next week, but I do want to go on record by saying that I support the amendment and the compromise as a whole, and I'm very pleased with how we came together and collaborated with, coming up with a solution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mullin, in today's contentious political environment in which we all exist, it's not easy finding the common ground. And based upon the comments that we've all heard here today, it's been very apparent that you did a good job of orchestrating that move to find a common ground, so I share my colleagues' sentiments, and thank you very much. Yeah, you're welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Just pay the bill, right?
Yeah.
Item number 74, ordinance to amend Chapter 49 Plumbing to amend Section 222 and 232 to modify qualification requirements for applicants for license for master plumber and journeyman plumbers.
Public hearing on agenda item number 74 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, my name is Jim Wonder. I'm chief plumbing inspector for the city of Omaha. The Omaha Plumbing Board asked the planning department to adopt some ordinance change to give them more flexibility in judging a person's qualifications for a test. And so we drafted that, they held public hearings on it, took input, modified it slightly, and then held and voted on this proposal. So the industry has been notified, there's agreement to this on both sides, the union, non-union contractors. So if you have any other questions, if I had to ask them.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk.
I think you, okay. Pursuant State Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items number 75 through 77 shall be held on the second reading. We can entertain. There you go.
Roll call. Gernant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jarom. Stothard. Thompson. Festerson. Mr. President. 349. We are adjourned.
Yes.
349. We are adjourned.[1739.42]